Recording in progress.
Thank you very much. Everybody ready? Well, good evening and welcome to the April 4th City Federal Way Council meeting. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. So, I hope everybody's had a great weekend and a good week so far. We're gonna have a good meeting for us, for everyone. Well, let's just dive right into Mayor's Emerging Issues Report. And Bill Vedino has put together a nice PowerPoint for us. Bill, let's walk through that real quickly. You've got some pictures there. You can see right there, the gang, right, the five members of the gang, the five members of the City Council and myself that were there at the National League of Cities in Washington, DC. And we've got other pictures. So, I'll give you a report on NLC, and I'll ask some of the council members to, part of the gang, to chip in as well. Update on April 21st to 28th Sister City Trip, Washington State Legislative Update, and then the Seventh Annual Korean-American School Fundraiser at Sahale School this past Saturday, April 1st, that's no joke, and Touch a Truck Saturday, May 20th at Wild Waves. Change of location is noted. So, as I noted, we were in the, five members of the City Council, we had the Deputy Mayor, Council President, Council Member Sepha Dawson, and Council Member Jack Dovi and Jack Walsh, bless you. We're all in Washington, DC. It was a phenomenal opportunity to, we got to sit down with our two state senators and as well as our Congressman Adam Smith. You can see the picture of Congressman Smith right there on the bottom. There's Senator Cantwell, Senator Murray. That's us in front of the, believe the Russell Office Building.
Russell Senate.
Yeah, Russell Senate Office Building. And it was really, we heard the First Lady came and spoke to the General Session there, so that she did a great job. And we had, I think, several Cabinet Secretaries, the Cabinet Secretary from HUD, as well as Agriculture, Tom Vilsack, the former, I think he was four-time governor of Iowa, serving in that, as a second time in that role. He was, he served all two terms under, all eight years under Obama, and now he's in for his second stint as Agriculture Secretary. Mitch Landrieu, the former mayor of New Orleans, and he is a Senior Advisor to the President. The former Chief of Staff to the, what's his name, to the, to President Obama. I'll think of it in a minute, or maybe you could.
John Podesta.
John Podesta, thank you very much. So, it was, it was really, we learned a lot. I have to tell you, it was astounding how many people from around the country were there. There were 3,500 or more, City Council Members, Mayors, our own Tacoma, Victoria Woodard's, for the Mayor of Tacoma, was the, is the President of the National League of Cities. So, she ran the event, and we were, it's, we were at the hotel right there in Washington, DC. The, the event was very suc, I mean, very helpful to talk about, they talked about a number of different issues, whether it's housing or drug policy, and I thought it was very much worthwhile. And then, some very interesting breakout sessions, like electrical vehicle charging stations, you know, technology issues, good governance issues. With that, let me, instead of just talking already, Council President, any observations about NLC and the different?
Well, so the conference is one thing, it gets everybody to Washington, DC. And so, what's interesting is that some council members don't know how the process works. And so, I want to make sure that our council was fully informed, because I have done this in the past. And so, part of the reason you're there is to have a meeting, there's only two senators for the whole state of Washington, right? Two senators for every state. So, if you are, you know, 200 or 300 cities in the state, and you all have your hand out, who do you think they're gonna listen to? They're gonna listen to the one that's gonna be at the door saying, here is my paper, this is what I want, and this is what I'm coming after you every month while it goes through the Appropriations Committee, because it's not a one-and-done, it's this process. So, what we ask for, and I'll make it real short so everybody else can fill in, we ask for $4 million from our two senators and our Congressman Adam Smith for a multipurpose building, or Farmer's Market is what some people are calling, for the TC3, for the new building for, in our downtown park, area next to the PAC. We asked for $2 million for childcare, for private business owners to provide childcare that could be within that building, if possible, because a lot of our people who work in Federal Way are in the service industry. Service industry doesn't end at five, a lot of times it's in the evening, and so they need childcare that can provide help for them during after hours. And then, we asked for $200,000 for electrical vehicle charging stations. So, 6.2 million was our ask, and that's where we're hoping to get out of this other half of the trip to the National League of Cities. So, I'll leave it at that.
And Richard Agnew, our federal lobbyist, and his staff did a phenomenal job. Deputy Mayor, did you have any observations?
Um, yeah, I, I started out the meeting on Saturday morning with a three-hour committee meeting for Information Technology and Communications, and Kim Wyman came to speak to us. She used to be here in the state of Washington as our Secretary of State. She is now the Senior Election Security Advisor, Cyber Security and Infrastructure Security Agency for the Biden Administration. And it was great to see her and talk to her, and she had a lot of suggestions and ideas of what we can do for, for all the cities, but, and then I am Vice President of the Asian Pacific American Membership of the National League of Cities, and Dr. Julie Kang, who is a professor, college professor in Seattle and part of our Korean community, was there, wanting to know where my husband was to take pictures. So, it was, it's always amazing to go and talk to people from all over the country, council members and mayors and city staff, and find out what they're doing, and find out that the problems we face are the problems they're facing. We're not unique in our problems. We, as a country, are pretty much facing the same issues over and over and over, small cities and villages and big cities. So, it was amazing.
Thank you. And not only was our city well represented, we had quite a number of people from Washington State. Council Member Sepha Dawson, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure.
And I'll go over this way.
Yeah, so, to add to what they said and what Council, what Deputy Mayor just said about problems and issues that all cities face in the nation, but also there were some solutions that were addressed and discussed, and so hearing those and hearing what other cities are doing, and how we could replicate that and not reinvent the wheel, was something that I got from there. But went to aviation policy early in the morning, and some of the things that they were saying is very important to our city because of CTAC and what they're doing, and how FAA regulates a lot of the things that we, that happens at our airports. And so, talking about how that regulation, those regulations need to be addressed and looked at, and making sure that FAA understands the communities around the airports, was something that was brought up there. And then, a lot, the other things that I really attended and focused on was racial equity, racial equity framework, and the different things that our city needs to focus on. And, and then, one was something that I would like to talk to our Finance Director was around bonds and about Section 108 loan guarantee, but also there were other things that was brought up, that, something that I was learning and knew to me. So, it was a great conference, I really got a lot from it, but it was such a fast-paced, like you're going from session to session to session. Sometimes it was exhausting because we started at 7:30 a.m., which for us was 4:30-ish. So, it was difficult to keep up, but, yeah, we made it. And because of quorum, some of the things I couldn't go to are some of the sessions, but our council members did fabulous job talking to our representatives, and hopefully we'll get the money that we asked for.
And we did a good job of sticking together. We'd get through, like even when the First Lady was there, you had to get there like an hour early to get with all the Secret Service and all the checkpoints. We all sat together, so we were all, we were all together. Councilwoman Walsh?
Yeah, very, very beneficial meeting, I think. It was the first time for me, and it was, I was able to learn a lot, the things that the other council members have mentioned. Also, just talking to and getting to know some of the, of the council members of cities across the nation, and see the, the things that we have in common, but how they're doing, what they're doing to address it, and then sharing things that we're, that we're doing that can help them. You know, I think the most of you know, I mean, I'm, I'm a, you know, I don't like lots of taxes and federal taxes and stuff like that, but they are being collected, and we need to make sure that our share comes back here to Federal Way. And we need to make sure that, that we get what, what we can in order to help make Federal Way a better city and more prosperous city. And I'm grateful for the, the leadership that, that our Council President and Deputy Mayor and the Mayor made with, with working with our, our senators and their staff and our Congressman and his staff. So, all in all, a very, very successful, successful event.
That was. Councilwoman Evi?
Yes, first of all, I want to say thank you to our staff. When we, when we met with Representative Smith, Cantwell, and Patty Murray's office, they all asked, are we shovel-ready for any money? And if we hadn't had a staff that's been working on TP3, getting ready to tear down the Target Building, doing the planning, if we haven't been orchestrated through the RFP, RFQ programs that we've gone through this last year, we would not have been able to say, we're shovel-ready. And so, I'm just, the one thing I, I walked away with three things, but the first thing I walked away with was our staff has done an amazing job to prepare us so when we go lobby in DC for the money that everybody's talked about, we actually had a story that people could look at and understand what's been going on. And as a council member, if that hadn't been done over the last nine months, we would have been there, had fun, met people, but we wouldn't have been able to ask for the things we asked for. So, that's the first thing I take away from that meeting.
Yeah.
The second two things I learned was I had a long discussion with the Mayor of Moscow, Idaho. We've probably all heard about the tragedies that they had there, and his one word was, be prepared for the worst thing to ever happen in your city. And that was good advice, and I was gonna share that with the Mayor. And the last thing that I heard, there was a lot of great things, a lot of great classes, a lot of great ways to, and make our city better, but there was a mayor from West Virginia, and he talked about fentanyl. And he said, we need to treat that drug like we're fighting the terrorists. It is the most lethal thing that we have going in our country is the addiction and the deaths that are going by fentanyl. And the fellow from the Department of Health got up and said, one in six fentanyl pills will kill you. And did I quote that right?
That is right, yeah.
And so, we need to, as a community, be ready to battle this drug addiction that's in our community, however we do it, think of it differently, but think of it as a war, because we need to protect our people from this drug that is killing people daily in our city and our community. So, those are my three takeaways. One, thank our staff for how prepared they made us. Two, be prepared for any emergency that we never thought of. And three, this drug addiction thing, fentanyl in particular, we gotta fight it like we're fighting terrorists, because it's a plague on our, our city and county and city.
And I remember at least three council members were in the ARPA discussion about how other communities are spending ARPA federal funds to, to get out of their recovery. So, it, you know, it is, it was very, very informative. So, thank you. Just want to make sure we brought back a report, and we were very much a cohesive group back there. And Washington State was really well represented with Deanna Dawson. Deanna Dawson is now the Executive Director of the, AWC Association of Washington Cities, and she was the Executive Director of the Sound Cities, which is the King County Cities All But Seattle, and she's doing a phenomenal job and, and really rallied us together. Okay, so the next slide, let's turn the page, literally. Then we've got, okay, we've got, we have not been on a Sister City Trip for, you know, at least 20 years, and we've got two sister cities in this area, Donghe, South Korea, we're gonna be there, that's the first place we'll go, April 21st through the 26th. We'll have meetings with the provincial governor, the mayor, city staff, and business leaders. I think we're gonna fly into Incheon on the, on that date, on the 21st, go through Seoul, and then end up on the east coast where Donghe is. And then, after the 26th, then we go back down to, or over to Japan, Hachinawa, and then we're gonna be there for the 26th to the 29th. I think we're gonna take the bullet, we're gonna spend a night in Tokyo, take the bullet train up several hours, a couple hundred miles, up to the northeast coast where our sister city is located, and we'll be meeting with the mayor, city staff, business leaders, and it'll be interesting to be on the bullet train. So, we're gonna be, you know, seeing, meeting a lot of people, and we're gonna be, this is the delegation that's going, myself and Council Members Sepha Dawson, Hong Tran, Jack Walsh, we'll have Tonya Carter, our Economic Development Director, Chief Andy Wong, John Hutner, Parks Director, because of the parks interactions that will be going on, Pam and Bill from my office to assist with details, and there's a lot of coordination, as you can imagine. And from the community, we have got Mayor Emeritus Michael Park, a former two-time mayor, and one of the first, I believe, if not the first Korean-American mayor on the United States, and, and he served twice in that role. Then we've got Chamber President Becca Martin and Business Leader Mark Freitas, and he's, Mark is not only a local Realtor, he, I believe he was an original signatory years ago to the Sister City relationship with Hachinawa. And we're very lucky to have him come with us, and he's with the, and then we've got the representatives from the Korean-American Association. So, you know, this is, on one level, cultural, but also business, and really making sure that we continue these important relationships and invest in them. All right, and then Legislative Update. The Pursuit Bill is still in the mix, albeit a watered-down version, and the, I'm not sure it's passed the, Bill, do you remember the status on pursuits? The number of mayors and city council members with AWC have signed on to the Pursuit Bill. There is still a version of it, still alive, we will keep you updated on that. The Blake Decision, or the Drug Fix 53-56, I believe, or 53-36, that is still in the works, still alive. They are required, well, not required, if they don't come up with something during this legislative session, then that will leave us, the current law will sunset. And so, I think they're gonna come, come up with something, and I think the, the bill they have come up with is a pretty good compromise, and that's working its way through the system. I testified previously on, and I've testified actually on all these bills, the Pursuit Bill, the Blake Decision, in, in both chambers. Middle Housing, there's a 1110, I talked about this at the last session, that's still in the mix, that will likely pass, we've been trying to get some modifications to that. And then Transportation, there, the House Bill actually, where, Washington State, excuse me, Washington State has a, a long-term budget, and not only are they working on, we've got a former state House member here, our Council President, but not only they're working on this two-year biennial budget, but they're also sort of putting down markers down, and one of the proposals, and the reason why I testified last week in the Senate, is because they were gonna take the Triangle funding. The Triangle is down there at I-5 and 348. And to let you know how long this has been going on, the, when I went back to Washington, DC in 2009, with the chamber and people, and Reichbauer and a number of other people, I remember sitting down and talking to Senator Cantwell about the first phase of that Triangle project. Now, we're on the second part of the Triangle, and it's still not funded. Well, while the House has our, the final piece of this in the next few years, in the 20, between '25 and '27 to get it completed, the Senate version would kick it out in the, into the 2030s, which means never. At least when you're talking in, in terms of public money, push it out a decade, that, that really is unacceptable. And we've been waiting literally decades to get this done. So, that's why I testified about, about getting, making sure that stays on track. We also have millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars, that we're going to be getting for downtown access, because we obviously have a choke point during key traffic times in our downtown, and so we need to make sure that we've got that infrastructure in our downtown to load people off the freeway and, and get them around town. So, you know, I think that downtown, as we know it, is literally changing before our very eyes. But I think both versions have funding for acc, downtown access. Council President?
I thought I would just mention the Triangle Project, in case you're not aware of that. If you remember years ago, when you used to come up heading to the west on Highway 18, and you'd be in a long, slow way to get to I-5, well, now, because half of the Triangle Project is done, meaning your Costco, it's that big over change to get the trucks up and over to get them onto I-5 quicker. So, that was the first part of the Triangle exchange. It was 110 million, of which we received 12 million from the federal government for. The other half of the Triangle is what our mayor is talking about, from the other side, bringing them on the other side, bringing them up and over, so that it'll relieve that situation going to five. So, we're trying to work for you to improve your transportation situation.
Exactly, what she said.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, the diaper drive, our friend Cheryl Hurst has been busy, the Fed Ryan Diaper Drive and City Hall Lobby. In 2022, we had 10,649 diapers. In 2023, we topped, well, we, Cheryl and, and her crew topped it with 12,633 diapers, 1,984 increase, and they've, they've also been able to gather 4,578 wipes. So, just a tremendous effort, and she's doing a great job, and we appreciate her. This past Saturday, we had the Seventh Annual Korean School Fundraiser Night, it's Sahale Middle School, and we had our friend Pete Von Reichbauer there, and, and the Deputy Mayor of Auburn, Jaronji, Jaronj, and then we had a former, a former mayor, Michael Park. We've got the Deputy Mayor there and Council Member Walsh, and it was just a great, we were able to, I was able to hand them their check for $2,000 in support of their organization, and, and they've been going for, I think since 2011, so 12 years, and the room was packed. It was, it was great. So, great community event. Okay, that is my report. Oh, actually, I will miss this one. I wanted to make sure we kind of gave an early update about this. As you know, spring gets very busy. Some days will have, like in, in spring, love, like three or four events in the same morning, and we'll go, one, council will go and the community members will go one to the other. One of those events on Saturday, May 20th, this is the Saturday after Mother's Day, and, because I think that's the Saturday that the Farmer's Market always opens, so that's always, they always tether it to that, which, what's that?
May 13.
Yeah, May 13th is when they, is when the Farmer's Market opens, 14th is Mother's Day, right?
Could be.
Okay, all right. I better figure that out, it's usually when I get my flowers at the market. So, Touch a Truck is the next Saturday, Saturday, May 20th, and you could see the, all the great pictures from last year. The reason why I'm talking about it to, right now, a couple months early, is it has been at the Performing Arts and Events Center parking lot. We can't have it there because we're knocking that building down, and so we've got to move it to another location. We found Wild Waves, and because of the construction that's gonna be happening, that's probably where we're gonna have it in the, in the, you know, over the, over the course of the years. Now, I don't know if you, if you remember or not, but Bill and I had to take the picture moments after that picture was taken with the hydroplane, and I actually got into the cockpit. And getting in was one thing, getting out was quite another. So, I think a team of people needed to extricate me from, but it's a great event for kids and, and adults alike. So, Saturday, May 20th, Wild Waves. Okay, so that's my report. Let's move on to the most important part of the evening, which is public comment. You've got three minutes, unless you're speaking for five individuals that you've listed and are present. And also, would you please let us know what community you live in, but we don't need your address. Okay, so why don't I, I'll read off a, a couple, and we can have people sort of queue up. Okay. Oh, green means go, yellow means 30 seconds, red means please stop. And I remember, I hate to interrupt people. All of it is the contrary, right? Okay, Barbara Comley, then Susan Strong, Jeffrey Tancredi, Lana Bostic, Michael Mitchell, Alex Milston, and Betty Taylor. All right, Barbara? Come on down.
Do I stand over here?
Yes, please.
Okay. Sorry, I'm a newbie.
Then the microphone will pop up, and then a green light will let you know when you're ready to go.
So, good evening, my name is Barbara Comley. I've been a 30-year resident here in Federal Way. I, when I bought my house, okay, the reason I'm here is because I received a nice letter, notice of parking violation on my own property. So, when I bought the house, the lot next to me was vacant, and I own that property. I put gravel down, and some grass has grown, and I've been waiting for this spring, summer to put more gravel down. And so, this is the first time I've heard anything like this notice, because I've been parking on this, on this property for a long time. I do have a two-car garage, and I kept my old car, but I bought a new car, and I park in the garage, and I just park my little car on the, the grass gravel, so it allows company to park on the driveway. But, so, you know, I received the letter, and I was just shocked that I'm not allowed to park on my own property. And I think, you know, I pay property taxes, and, and if I can't park on my own property, then I'm losing two spaces, and I think that will lower the value of my house, and the property taxes should go lower too. And I think if King County is gonna enforce this, then it should go to everybody. And I walk the neighborhood every day with my two little dogs, and I'm picking up trash, I'm cleaning the neighborhood, I'm the neighborhood captain, and, you know, I love my city, and my house is not junky or anything, it's, I'm widowed, so I have to hire somebody to help me, and here's a picture. Anyway, I just think they need to enforce it to everybody. And walking around the neighborhood, there's a lot of cars on the front lawn, and, and it's, it's a mess. And, you know, I could be like this woman that did this and take pictures too, but I'm really sad to see this and hear it. But thank you.
Barbara, thank you so much for coming today. And I don't have an email or a phone number for you, but Bill Vedino, who was helping me with the PowerPoint, he's in the back there, he's gonna come get your phone number, and we, we'll have it in the system somewhere, but I, but I want to make sure, what Bill's gonna do is make sure that we get your phone number, your email address, we follow up, and we'll, we'll track this down with code compliance, figure out what's going on, and figure out, and we'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm one of 12 that received a notice.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Okay, Susan Strong.
I'm a little shorter than most people. Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, Council President Kochmar, council members. I'm Susan Strong, and I live in Federal Way. I moved from Seattle to Federal Way area in about 1975 because I was working at the airport, and this area was close to my job at the airport. The CTAC mall had just opened, Southwest 320th was not paved, west of 21st Avenue Southwest. St. Francis Hospital had not yet been built. I was so happy to be in an area where the roads were wide and parking was free. I remember telling my family this, the parking is free. They all live in Seattle, by the way. What happened in Federal Way to change it into a city where I no longer feel safe? Pacific Highway South is full of trash, shopping carts, and homeless people. Near the Safeway parking lot, you see drug dealers and people doing drugs with trash all around them. And I did drive by there on my way here tonight, and of course, no one was there. They were one driveway over. They were one driveway over, but they weren't right in the very worst spot. I'm sure the day center serves its purpose of providing showers, laundry facilities and resources, but the scene outside in the parking lot and sidewalks is horrendous. So I stopped there about 6 o'clock. There were three huge, I'm talking huge, shopping carts full of stuff and multiple people. It just looked terrible. And I think the day center closes at 4:00, so I don't, well, I'm not going to wonder what they were doing. I think I have that figured. Whoever is in charge of this mess either doesn't care or they don't see the problem. I hope our city council cares enough about the people to return this to the safe city it once was. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Jeffrey Tancredi.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, deputy mayor Honda and council president Kochmar, council members. Jeff Tancredi, Federal Way resident, 27 years. The King County Regional Homeless Authority is requesting nearly 12 billion, billion with a B, to address local homelessness over the next five years. Meanwhile, we can process many thousands of asylees and refugees. We make sure they are processed and integrated into our country. And that's great. I'm very proud to say I interviewed many thousands of asylees and refugees as an adjudications officer. So that's, that's a good thing. I'm very proud of that. But we are neglecting Americans who have serious drug addiction and mental health issues by not getting the treatment. Why? It appears that King County doesn't have much desire to do so. They would have done this 10 to 15 years ago. Every day I drive around Federal Way and I see drug, drug addicted individuals at the old Target Building, at the Town Square Park, at Goodwill, Firestone, Cricket Wireless, to name a few. I see buildings and businesses tagged with graffiti, windows of businesses broken. I see the drug addicted at many bus stops on Pacific Highway, 320th, occupying them, setting fires, preventing the law-abiding citizens from waiting inside the bus stop. I have submitted numerous requests to the city and the police. And by the way, shout out to our great police force. I've submitted numerous requests to the city and the police via the Eyes on Federal Way See, Click, Fix, and these problems get addressed really fast. This is not normal behavior for, to see these folks who are struggling with drug addiction. Our city is being inundated with homeless drug addicts and King County has failed to fix this problem. What can we do as a city? If King County and Olympia are not going to fix this problem, Federal Way should and they must enact ordinances such as if you are suspected of or using or possessing methamphetamine, fentanyl, or other dangerous drugs, you will be arrested and you will be given the choice to either go to jail or go to treatment. That's it. There's, there's no option C. You know what option C is? It's somebody's backyard and nobody wants it in their backyard. You and I all know that. So let's not virtue signal, okay? Let's not pretend that you care. This is not an option. Option C is not an option. We don't have time to wait. King County has shown that they don't have the conviction to fix this problem. We got to stand up. We have to stand up in Federal Way because the drug addiction problem is coming here. Wallingford, International District, Burian, it's coming this way and we have to stand up. We have to do something. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you. And if anybody sees, we actually handle through Eyes on Federal Way over 180 reports of garbage, graffiti, shopping carts per week. That's the average in the past couple of years. So if you see anything like that, put it on, we take care of it right away. We don't let graffiti sit for more than a, within a 24-hour period if we can get to it. So, and we're also waiting very carefully to hear what the the state does with regard to drugs, the drug law, because they have state preemption. All right, more to come on that later. Lana Bostic.
Hi. So, hi, Mayor, deputy mayor, council and people of Federal Way. My name's Lana Bostic. I've been in Federal Way for 42 years. I have three things to talk about. First of all, I want to wish you a wonderful trip to Korea and Japan. I love to travel and I wish I was going with you, but I just am thankful that you're going there and you can represent our city and I'm anxious to hear about how that trip goes. The second thing I wanted to say a thank you about the event that was in Federal Way, I can't remember if it was February, March, but the gun buyback program, which I think you got back 190-some guns off the streets. So in lieu of the fact that we still have major mass gun violence almost daily in this country and that the legislature and the government is moving glacially to remedy anything about that, I am just thankful that in our city, there's at least something going on that gets guns off the street. I hope that you have that program again sometime and it would be just as successful. And also to note that Tacoma is going to have a program, the gun buyback program, where you get, you don't get money, you just get a Visa card, like a credit card. Theirs is going to be April 30th at Shaney Stadium. So I'm hoping that that will be very successful too. So thank you for doing that for our community. And the last thing is that I am the chairperson of the Senior Advisory Commission in Federal Way. And we are this year hosting the very first Senior Health and Resource Fair. It's going to be Thursday, Thursday, May 11th from 10 to 2 at the PAC. And we have a lot of wonderful sponsors. So far, we have Virginia Mason, Franciscan Health, Humana, Affinity Senior Transitions, Life Point Law, and the Multi Service Center are sponsors for this event. So I'm just hoping that I'm going to, I gave some information to Stephanie and she's going to pass one of these out, so I'm hoping that you will support this and drop by. We have about 40 vendors so far, going to have information about senior healthcare, financial help. This will be good information for seniors, family members, caregivers. It'll just, it's going to be a wonderful fair. So thank you very much. Hope you can be there.
All right, thanks, Lana. All right, Michael Mitchell, and then followed by Alex Milston.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Mitchell. I've lived in Federal Way for 25 years and Barb and I are neighbors. And I also received a letter from compliance about parking in the easement in my, on my property. And I'm just wondering if maybe at the time when the, that law was made up, that maybe it was relevant, but maybe it could be outdated and maybe that's something that could possibly be changed, look into, maybe seeing if it's relevant today. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I also don't have a phone number, so Bill's, Bill's coming around and he, Michael, he's going to get your phone number and your, we've got your email, but let's make sure that we've got the good email address for you. We're going to follow up on that and we'll be back in touch with you tomorrow. Okay, Alex. And after Alex, we've got Betty Taylor. And is there anybody online? Okay, Alex.
Hey. My name is Alex Milston and I'm a resident of Federal Way. Originally, I wasn't really planning on making a comment, but there is something that Jack Doby said that really stood out to me in particular regarding fentanyl and terrorism and trying to address both the same way. And I actually kind of agree. Both of them are caused in large part by severe, very, very severe conditions, like really bad living conditions, which cause people to turn to either/or. And unfortunately, the tactic of cracking down hard on it as hard as we can hasn't worked. And in Afghanistan, where we spent 20 years trying that, it failed and we can see by who rules it right now. And with the war on drugs, it also failed, which we can see by going through any city where I tried to crack down and it failed. So I believe the best, or there's two big things that we could do to severe, to very much help with the drug problem. The first one is preventing people from getting addicted in the first place. The best way to do this is improving living conditions for people and making it so that people don't really have the stress that caused them to turn to drugs in the first place. And the second one for people who are already addicted are rehabilitation services. Doing those things would, I believe, help with the issue a lot. Rather than having harsh, harsh laws that just put people in jail, then they go back out, go back in jail, and having that cycle repeat endlessly, which is what happens in a lot of cities, I believe that just doesn't really, really help. Having a good rehabilitation service that could actually stop that cycle and having good preventative services such as good living conditions that could prevent the cycle from starting in the first place. I believe those things would help a lot with, with the issues that we're facing. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Alex. Okay, and then Betty Taylor.
My name is Betty Taylor and I live in Federal Way. Good evening, everyone. So July 4th, we have a celebration in Federal Way every year, big celebration. Okay. So we know in August, there's National Night Out. Okay, and I believe and I feel that the same way we push July 4th, we want to be able to push National Night Out. But this year, it's going to be different. This year, instead of having it at a central location, they'll be going to the neighborhoods, like the police and the mayor, they'll be going to the neighborhoods. So then we have a bigger, we have a, we are a city of 100,000 people, so we need to figure out a way, how are we going to reach 100,000 people in August on National Night Out? So in order to do that, we need a vision and we need a plan because we want to be able to reach everybody. We want to be able to reach every household. So the same way that we, we promote July 4th with mailings, with newspaper, whatever we need to do to make this happen so that we can reach 100,000 people, we have, I think, maybe about, is it 200 apartment complexes in Federal Way? But we need to be able to reach because we don't want to leave no one behind. We don't want to hear after, we don't want to hear after the fact that, oh, well, they didn't come to my house. So how are we going to get the message out? How are we going to do this? We're going to do this by contacting every apartment complex in the city of Federal Way. We're going to do this by, by networking with schools and churches. We're going to do this by speaking with apartment managers, getting the apartment managers involved. We're going to do this by, it's almost like campaigning. I just really, I feel like campaigning. I feel like we, we have to make this happen. We have to reach every household. Every household has to hear about National Night Out and the vision that the mayor has. So how can we get behind his vision and make this happen? Because if we don't get behind his vision, it's not going to happen. But we as a city can make this happen. So I'm willing to do whatever I can to get behind the vision to make it happen. If I have to go and knock on doors myself, if I have to go and put whatever I have to do to, it just can't be a done deal. It has to happen. We can't, no one should be left behind. This is important. We're talking about economic development, a city that is growing. We need to grow. Let's make this city grow.
Thank you, Betty. Did you say we've got someone online?
We do not, Mayor.
Oh, but Councilmember Norton is online.
She is, yes.
Great, okay. Noted for the record. Okay. Okay, item five, presentations. Proclamation for Food Waste Prevention Week, Councilmember Walsh. Please do, yes. Go ahead.
If, if the MSC Food Bank Director Stephen Curry and Senior Center Food Bank Director Kay Lee can come to the podium over here.
Mike, please. Your microphone.
Oh, and it helps if I turn on my mic.
Would you say that again for the folks watching?
So we have MSC Food Bank Director Stephen Curry and Senior Center Food Bank Director Kay Lee at the podium. And I will read the proclamation. On Food Waste Prevention Week, whereas nationwide, up to 35% of all food produced is thrown away rather than eaten, and whereas wasting food also wastes water, energy, labor, pesticides, fertilizers, and land used to make and transport the food, and whereas reducing food waste will also reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and whereas safe and nutritious food that is currently thrown away could instead feed hungry people, and whereas more than 6,308,000 Washington residents face food insecurity, and whereas a family of four can save an average of $1,800 each year by avoiding purchasing food that is not eaten and then becomes food waste, and whereas Federal Way actively supports donations of food through programs such as the Mayor's Day of Concern for the Hungry, and whereas the Multi Service Center and the Federal Way Senior Center Food Bank are local organizations actively engaged in food waste prevention work and also support Food Waste Prevention Week, and whereas the Multi Service Center rescues 50,000 pounds of healthy food every month from local grocery stores to help feed our neighbors in need, and whereas the Federal Way Senior Center Food Bank receives up to 50% of their distributed food from local grocers and decreases the amount of food waste by giving damaged or spoiled food to local farmers to feed chickens. Now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the city of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim April 10 through 16, 2023, to be Food Waste Prevention Week and call upon the citizens of Federal Way to reduce food waste year round. Signed this fourth day of April, 2023.
Come on over here. And we would like to present the proclamation to each of you.
Thank you, sir.
And if you would like to make a, okay, we, we need to get the photo first, I mean. All right. All right. And Steve, would you like to go first and then Kay?
Sure. Mayor Farrell, council members, staff and guests. MSC is honored to receive this proclamation to kick off Food Waste Prevention Week. MSC is grateful for your support of our programs and will be an ambassador of this special week moving forward to teach food waste reduction while serving our neighbors in need. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kay. I'm with the Federal Way Senior Center Food Bank. And actually, I was merely ready for, and I'm here, so thank you so much. I'm here to supporting this program. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you both so much for the work your organizations do. They really help out the people in our community and so many people rely on, on these just incredibly important lifelines. So thank you so much.
If I can just make another comment, they, there's also opportunities to serve for volunteers to serve at both of the food banks. The Federal Way Senior Center Food Bank, I'm very familiar with it. For the last three years since the beginning of COVID, I've had the opportunity to volunteer there. And it's a 100% volunteer operated organization. And I know that the MSC Food Bank does a tremendous amount of good and uses many volunteers as well. And so there are opportunities in our city to help our, our fellow, our fellow beings.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, now on to council committee and regional committee reports. We've got the Parks, Recreation, Human Services and Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Walsh.
All right. The, the most important thing is that later on this month, on April 22nd, is the Parks Appreciation Day, the Annual Parks Appreciation Day. This year, it will be, there will be people serving in two parks. This year, it will be, there will be people serving in two parks, the Blueberry Farm Park on 356th and also Town Square Park in the heart of our downtown. And there are opportunities for people of all abilities to serve. This is a, I believe, the 18th year of the Parks Appreciation Day, and we need a lot of people out helping us. It's from 9:00 to noon, and it's one of the things that helps beautify our, our wonderful city. Also, our next Parks Committee meeting will be a week from tonight on the 11th of, of April, so right here at 5:00, and that is my report.
All right, Land, thank you very much. Land Use and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Doby.
Thank you, Mayor. Land Use meeting for May is May 1, 5:00 here in the chambers. We had a, a very good meeting to talk about the development at TC 3 and some different changes to make development work better. At our last land use meeting, some of those items carried forward to next meeting, so it'd be a, a good meeting for people to come to that are interested in what's happening downtown and see how we're doing things to make our city more competitive, to have development, the right type of development. And I just wanted to announce, this is kind of a, a land use issue, but we've had a vacant grocery store down on 312th and 509 down by Lakota for many, many years. And I happened to be at the Starbucks the other day and saw this fellow interviewing, and he's actually opening the grocery store down there on April 20th at 11:00 a.m., and they're having their grand opening just before, two days before our park cleanup. And I say this because this is a great example of how land use in Federal Way, in my opinion, works so businesses can open. They've had to go through permitting, they've had to go through many different things. We're going to have a new grocery store down by Lakota Junior High. And when I met the fellow, I liked him, like everybody, but I said I'd let everybody know that he's having a grand opening so we can go to this new independently owned grocery store in Federal Way that will be serving people's needs in the area around Lakota Junior High.
Yep, Grocery Outlet. Yeah, they've got all kinds of fun products there, and yeah, it's, it's great. So it's a good community store. You're right, that, that, that area has been vacant for far too long, so.
Far too long.
Yeah, it's going to be great to see them. So again, everybody, that's, that's Thursday, April 20th.
Thursday, April 20th at 11:00 a.m., the owners Gary and Cheryl DeCoursey will be there to greet you and share what they have to offer in their new store, new business in our community.
Very good. Okay, awesome. All right, now Finance, Economic Development, Regional Affairs Committee, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our committee met last Tuesday, and we approved four items on the consent agenda for you to consider today. I also want to take this opportunity to recognize the good work from Finance Department. They actually now implement the Open Goff software. I probably have to simplify this, but basically what it is, it show the financial condition of the city, where the money coming from, where the taxes coming from, where the money go into, to each and every department. With this software is, is our hope to increase our transparency with the public, increase our credibility with the public. Very soon, I believe, Finance staff will bring it to the full council and show that to all of us and to the public, and we are asking council and the public to give us feedback to see what else you want to see, and we will, you know, figure out how to put that online for you to, to look at. So stay tuned. Our next meeting is going to be on April 25th at 5:00 p.m. here. Councilmember Jack Doby will be facilitate that meeting since some of us will be out of the office. So with that, I'm at my report.
Very good. Thank you very much. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Esposito.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting is Wednesday, April 12th on Zoom, and we did not have a meeting last month, so there isn't anything for me to report on.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. The PIC meeting will be next week on Wednesday. It's going to be hybrid, so it'll be at Renton City Hall and on Zoom, and this will be the first in-person PIC meeting since, gosh, probably 2020. So, but I think I will still attend on Zoom. The agenda will cover wastewater rates and regional water quality, veterans, seniors, and human services levy renewal, affordable housing, countrywide, countywide planning policies, and any other upcoming issues that come up between now and then. So anyone can, can attend by Zoom if you're interested. It starts at 7:00 o'clock, or you're welcome to go to Renton City Hall and, and see other people there. I want to again invite people to the Senior Health and Resource Fair, which is May 11th at the PAC from 10 to 12. The Senior Commission has been working on this for over a year. We are really excited. We have a full list of vendors, we have sponsors, we have people who have, since the cutoff date of sponsorship and vendors, have, have asked to, to be part of it. And so this should be an annual event. It's free to everyone. You don't have to be a senior to go, and if you have a senior in your life, or soon have a senior in your life, you might be interested in going and finding out what resources are available for those folks. I'd like to thank those who applied for our commissions. We did commission interviews at 5:00 tonight, and we had many, many talented people apply. And an upcoming AWC event that council might be interested in is the 2023 Legislative Session Recap. It'll be May 18th online from 1:00 to 3:30 p.m. I usually have, I usually attend that, and it's pretty interesting to, to see what's gone on and how AWC has interacted, what other cities are talking about. And I'd like to thank Amy Gladden. She is our Assistant in the Council Office for her help in getting us to Washington, DC. It was not easy getting five people registered and on an airplane to Washington, DC, and we really appreciate your help. Thank you.
All right, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of the things that haven't been discussed yet, we will be having a meeting. Some of you are interested in the meetings that we're having with the school board directors. Our next meeting with Deputy Mayor Holland and I will be April 12th at 9:30 to discuss issues between the school district. And one of the things I think I want to make sure we discuss is security and safety in light of the shooting that happened in Tennessee. So we'll be going over some of those things, and then also talking to the school about all of the part-time jobs we have available, partly with the city of Federal Way, that are available for our students. So those of you who have children in the schools, make sure that you check our website for the city of Federal Way for summer jobs. April 22nd will be the Make Music Fundraiser Breakfast at Jimmy Mack's at 8:00 a.m., and that's also Chair, Jack Walsh's Parks Appreciation Day, right, at the Blueberry Farm?
Yes.
Okay, then that's at what time?
9:00 to noon.
9:00 to noon. So roll up your sleeves and put on your jeans and come on over and start helping. And I want to talk to you a little bit, just for fun, talk a little bit. We were at the National League of Cities, and, and after that, I, you know, I've been on the West Coast my entire life, the Pacific Ocean. I wanted to see where my family immigrated, on the Atlantic Ocean, coming through Ellis Island. So I took a train trip from DC through New York and up to Boston, and I can tell you, it was, it was surprising to see that there's a lot of small states, Delaware, Connecticut. You go through a couple of states within a two-hour period. I mean, I was pretty shocked about that, that you could go through three states, but what I noticed was, some are clean and some are not. Some have a lot of graffiti. Now, mind you, we're going through train yards, so it's kind of hard to see, but I can tell you the difference, of course, you all know New York, how crowded and busy that is, and the big buildings, tenements. I don't want those in our city. I don't want our city to become a, a city of, we, we need to have a mix of housing. And the graffiti and the dirt was shocking to me, and, and the crime in New York. Boston, totally different. Boston, on the, on the Atlantic Coast was clean and bright and fun, and we, it was Palm Sunday, I'm Catholic, we went to church. After we left church, we met a man walking on the street, and he said, well, where's Little Italy? We want to have spaghetti. And he said, now, listen, he said, I got dressed up just to go to see the big guy today. He says, I'm Irish. And I want to tell you, the Irish were here before the Italians were. That seemed to be a big deal, I'm not sure why, but we did go to a little, a little late tour restaurant called Limoncello's, which happened to be right next door to where Paul Revere's house was. And it was interesting to me to see the Tea Party in the Boston Harbor and Paul Revere's house, and the North Church were all within walking distance. And Mr. Paul Revere, I'll just end with this, was a busy guy. I know he was a blacksmith, I know he was part of the Sons of Liberty, I know in the North Church, they put a lamp, one if by land, two if by sea. So they all asked us, do you know how many lamps were in the North Church? Yeah, two. One if by, two if by sea. So at any rate, he had married, and then, mind you, this is 1770, a woman who had eight children. She died in childbirth with the eighth child. That young man, a man, married again and had eight more children in a two-bedroom house. All I could think of, well, no wonder he's out riding around the Sons of Liberty. There's no room in the house. At any rate, I just thought that was kind of fun. So kind of interesting to see how different people live, but I can tell you, you're very, very lucky on the Pacific Coast. Everything is newer here. Our salmon is by far the best, in my opinion. Our crab is fabulous, if you can find it, and the lobster on their end is, was pretty good. I don't know, I didn't want to buy it, but it was told to me that was very good. But it's different between the way the two coasts are, and I think that you are very, very fortunate to live on the Pacific Coast, and I am very thankful to my family that immigrated from Austria and Germany and some of the, the towns that were being, that the Cossacks were invading, to come to through Ellis Island and then have me end up on this side of America. Anyway, thanks for listening.
All right, thank you very much. All right, now moving on to the consent agenda, these items have gone through committee and can be passed all at once. After I read them, I'll ask whether a council member would want to pull an item for separate consideration. Item A, minutes for the March 21st, 2023, regular and special meeting minutes. Item B, monthly financial report, February 2023. Item C, AP vouchers, 216 through 23 through 31523, and payroll vouchers, 2123 through 22823, and asphalt overlay project bid award. Item D, Sahaly Track Replacement, Retainage Release, and Item E, Spectra Venue Management 2022 Incentive Fee. Council, would, would any of you want to pull an item for separate consideration? All right, Council President, Coach Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the consent agenda, items A through E.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All right, and actually, Councilmember Doby, can you move that water thing? Because when you, when you do have a question, I'm not going to be able to see it. All right, all right. There's been a motion, a second, a call for, a call for any discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A matter passed unanimously. Congratulations, Brian, thank you for your work. Brian Hoffman, our PAC director is in the back, so thank you. Okay. Item eight, council business. This is the King County Grant Acceptance for Recognition of Veterans. Staff report from Bill Vedino, our policy advisor.
Mayor, Council President, Deputy Mayor, council members, this is to introduce, this is part of the agenda. It is to accept the, have you consider accept the, accepting the King County Veterans Grant? The overview is that we've allocated a $5,000 grant via King County Councilmember Pete Von Reitbauer to the City of Veterans Way Veterans Committee. The purpose of this is for projects that will, quote, "support, honor service members and veterans in the community," unquote, and this funding must be spent by December 31st, 2023. The, as you know, the Federal Way Veterans Committee was formed by the mayor in 2018, and they informed us basically of the design of the Veterans Monument that was dedicated September 11th, 2011. It's the recommendation of the mayor to reconvene the Veterans Committee to make recommendations about the use of these funds. So the council options are approve the proposal, approve proposal with changes, disapprove, and provide direction to staff, and his recommendation is to approve. Questions?
All right, council, any questions? Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the acceptance of the $5,000 grant from King County, basically King County Councilmember Pete Von Reitbauer, on behalf of the City of Federal Way Veterans Committee in support of projects that will honor service members and veterans in the community.
A second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matters pass unanimously. All right, thank you, good job, Bill. Thank you. Oh, and Bill, about those other items, let's, let's talk, make sure we talk about that after the meeting, about the constituent concerns.
I have to turn you an email.
Very good, thank you very much. Okay, let's see here. All right, now on to our commission appointments. Item B, Parks and Recreation Commission Appointments. Councilmember Walsh.
I move to make the following appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Montgomery Stewart and Gerald Knutson to voting positions with terms expiring April 30, 2025, and Michael Campsmith, Karen Brugato, Raina Ross, and George Vedino to positions with a term expiring April 30, 2026.
A second, there.
All right, there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations to our nominees. All right, Item C, the Youth Commission Appointments, Councilmember Walsh.
I move to make the following appointment to Youth Commission. Isada Bangora to a voting position with an expiration date of August 31, 2025.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the vote is unanimous. Okay. Let's see here. Okay, and now on to Planning Commission, Councilmember Doby.
Yes, I move to appoint Sonya Tashuba to the Planning Commission as an alternative member for term to expire September 30, 2024.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Councilmember Norton, did I, did I hear you?
Aye.
All right, there we go, thanks.
Mayor, can I, her name is Sonya Tashabi, so in case she doesn't hear her own name.
Thank you for correcting my English.
Very good, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, now ordinances, we're on, on number nine, ordinances, second reading and enactment. Item A, Council Bill 845, 2022, Comprehensive Plan Amendments, Rivera Property Sites, Specific Request and Public Works Text Amendments, Non-Motorized Transportation. With the city clerk, please read the ordinance title.
Council Bill 845, 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendments, Rivera Property Sites, Specific Request and Public Works Text Amendments, Non-Motorized Transportation. An ordinance of the city of Federal Way, Washington, amending the Federal Way Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map, changing the Comprehensive Plan designation and zoning of 1.26 acres located at the southeast corner of First Avenue South and South 328th Street, parcel number 0521049204, from professional office PO to community business BC, and amending the text of the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 3, Transportation to Include Various Citywide Non-Motorized Transportation Improvement Projects.
All right. And do you need to, you don't need to, oh, that's just reading the title. Okay, Councilmember Doby, do you have a motion?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been, there's been a motion and several seconds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, the matter's passed unanimously. Okay. Okay. Item B, Council Bill 846, Community Business, BC Code Amendments for School Uses. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 846, Community Business, BC Code Amendments for School Uses, An Ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, Relating to the Height of Minor and Supporting Structures for School Uses in the Community Business, BC Zoning District, Amending Federal Revised Code 19220040.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dobie?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in...
Can I make one comment?
Councilmember Dobie?
Yeah, this is going to be a great addition to our city when this, the stadium gets built and the lighting gets put up and less lighting into the neighborhood. So I want to really thank the school district and our staff for working together to build a great project in the City of Federal Way that we'll all be proud of for the next 30, 40 years. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Here, here, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I'll only say, I'll only say nay if it's to extend the meeting.
All right, okay, exactly. All right, thank you, councilmember. All right, now, going through our regular business, we've got our council reports. It's the first meeting of the month, so we start at the council position number one. Councilmember Asafid Ason.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, so after the NLC conference, I stayed in DC with and did touristy stuff. And it was such a blast going to all the monuments and learning a lot about the history of this country. And, but the highlight was I went to this exhibit. It's Artec, I think is what it's called, where you're in there and it's just, everything is moving and in motion and butterflies, I love butterflies. So it was just so amazing to be just standing there, being surrounded by butterflies. It felt so real. And I hope we have that kind of museum or something here in our federal way, because there were a lot of people, there was a line, and I didn't realize how adults can enjoy something like that. And I tried to see that many kids. I saw more adults just sitting there and masking in this amazing, it just felt so real and so surreal and so engaging. And like I said, I was just thinking that someday, hopefully, we'll have that here in our city where people, we want Federal Way to be a place for people to come and have a reason to come. And I think that'd be a great way to have families entertained. But anyway, that's my report, and thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, DC was just absolutely beautiful that week. They had the Japanese, as you guys all know, you were there, but the Japanese maples came out and bloomed. And they actually had literally a carnival for that. I thought on a Sunday, it would be a breeze to get where we were, to get down there. But it was like a total traffic jam snarled, but we got to see the Washington Monument and Washington and Lincoln, and it was just absolutely beautiful. So, yeah, it was great. And it was great to see, it was great to be there with the council members. Councilmember Erica Norton?
Nothing to report, except it's 85 degrees.
Very good, very good. And we do want to, when we get a chance, we're going to want to hear a full report on your delivery of that baby, so...
You know, it was traumatic. I mean, I can tell you right now, it was not a good situation and it was bad.
Yeah.
So I don't think you guys want to hear about it, but I mean, I'll tell you privately, but this...
All right.
I already told Amy and Susan, so ask them.
Okay, all right. We'll get a report, and so thank you very much. Councilmember Tran?
Nothing for me that exciting, thank you.
All right, thank you, exactly. Councilmember Walsh?
First off, just a comment on Washington DC. I really think that anybody who's listening, especially if you have young people in your home, I think that every young person, to gain a greater appreciation of our country, of our nation, should visit Washington DC. And the different memorials, the different museums there, it is wonderful. I spent a summer in DC 41 years ago. There's been a lot of things added since then with the memorials. One of the FDR Memorial, the Martin Luther King Memorial, the Korean War Memorial, Eisenhower Memorial, have all newer since the time that I was there. And the wall, the Vietnam Memorial, was, I visited it once in between, it wasn't there 41 years ago. But one of the things that really impressed me was the Korean War Memorial. And the time that we were there in DC, some of the time was sunny and beautiful, other the times it was kind of rainy and misty, you'd think that you were in Seattle. And, but, and it was like that when I visited the Korean War Memorial. I have a cousin, an older cousin, who's like a second father to me, that was in the worst parts of the Korean War. And I never, I grew up, I mean, he helped grace me, and I only heard him mention the war two times, and both times he had tears in his eyes. But with the Korean War Memorial, on that gray, dreary day, I think it brought more realism to the memorial. The Korean War Memorial is statues of soldiers sludging through the mud through the country, and their eyes are captivating. And I mean, it's a very emotional experience. But it made me more fully appreciate the heritage that all of us have as Americans. And I think that every young person should go there and experience that. Different things there will touch different people. The wall, the Vietnam Memorial, very touching as well, much more, much more plain and simple than the Korean War Memorial, but so many things there that are truly, truly touching. And it gives great meaning to our heritage. Speaking of sacrifices and volunteer work, earlier I mentioned when we did the Food Proclamation, just a little bit about the Senior Center Food Bank. This past week, one of the volunteers there, Don, an elderly gentleman, passed away. And he passed away this past week of pancreatic cancer. He was there serving until three weeks before he passed away. I mean, he was dedicated, he was dedicated. And there are so many good, dedicated people in our community that, and I really appreciate those who are dedicated to helping our community. And lastly, last night was a great night for the fine young man that we had here two weeks ago, M Tongi, and he went on to the next stage with American Idol. And he was very impressive and touching once again. And so a shout out to him and his family who live here in Federal Way.
Here, here, that's great, thank you. Councilmember Dobie?
Thank you very much. Two memories from Washington DC while I was there. One was I ran into, I was born in Burlingame, California. Most people don't know where that is. But I walked in and met two families while we were going through the White House that were from Burlingame, California, that lived in the neighborhood that I grew up in.
Wow.
So it's a small world, and they were young children with their grandparents coming to see DC. The other thing that I found interesting, I happened to go to a meeting on my own in DC one night, and I got a Uber rider, driver. And this gentleman lives right by where we stayed in the hotel, and his church has purchased, I think he said, 100 affordable homes in DC right next to where we stayed for people to stay in. And I was just impressed listening to how they did it and how they were involved and how they were concerned about their community in DC. And it was very good to hear that. Another point coming up, Marine Hills Swimming Pool, 60 year anniversary. Everybody here on the council probably will be getting invites from Darren McDonald, my neighbor. And I would encourage everybody to come to that parade. It's one of the, I think it's the only parade in Federal Way now that starts in Marine Hills by, off of 8th Avenue and drives up to the pool. So it's coming up, watch for that. And all the council members, I want to make sure you know you'll get an invite. Maybe some of you will ride in cars, too. The mayor surely will. I'm glad we're having the Truck Expo in Chana Park. My five-year-old grandson and two-year-old grandson, who are in Frankfurt, Germany, will be here just then to go see trucks, and they are into trucks. So thank you for the staff for putting that together. Will be there with, first time with a little kid. And lastly, we've talked in our ARPA discussions many months ago about financial training and the possibility of having a program where we offer training to people in our neighborhood, in our community, to get trained on how to manage finances. And I didn't know this, but there's five trainers in Federal Way who I've met, who are gonna, they say they'll volunteer to run the program if we decide to launch it, and train people at no cost in a city facility on how to manage finances and how to make sure they manage to get out of debt. So more to come, but I was happy to hear we have those people in Federal Way that are willing to step forward and volunteer. That's my report.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So I want people to put on their calendars, July 28th, which is my son's birthday, however, it's the Fourth Friday in July, and that is annual Quanah Salmon Bake, 4:00 to 8:00 PM at Steel Lake Park. And tickets will go on sale soon, and it's very affordable. Tickets are under $30 for a meal, a restaurant-style meal. You will see all sorts of scouts and key club, high school kids volunteering in Quanahs, and nonprofits have, will all have tables there if they'd like. So you can visit the nonprofits at Federal Way. It's a great community event. It's been going on for 60 some years, how many years, Karen?
67.
67. And Karen's in the Quanahs. And it's just a great community event. So put that on your calendar, and it never rains on the salmon bake. No, it doesn't. When I was, when I was in charge of the salmon bake a few years ago, it drizzled all day. I thought, oh, my gosh, it's going to rain. But at 4 o'clock, it stopped raining, and it was beautiful. So it never rains on the salmon bake. The Korean School of Federal Way fundraiser on Saturday was just so much fun. The children of the school, all their classes came out and they sang or they had a poem or something, or a dance. But the littlest, the youngest class had the performer who one day could be on American Idol. He was amazing. I'm sure his parents were probably in their seats going, no. But he kept us all laughing, and one day he will be a great performer. And when I was in Washington DC, since we're all talking about that, one of the committees I'm on, the Information and Technology Committee, there is a council member named Susan Faber from the city of Dubuque, Iowa, which is where my son lives. And we've had several Zoom meetings before we met in person in Washington DC. And so Susan and I have been communicating, because not only do we have something in common, the city of Dubuque, she lives there, I visit there, but our first name is so awesome, right, Susan? Just a great, awesome first name. And we met, I walked into the committee room and I looked for her, she was looking for me, and she was the only, her only council member there for a few days. So we sort of did things together so that she wasn't alone and I could get to know her better. But she, my son went to the University of Dubuque on a wrestling scholarship. She's a regent at the University of Dubuque, and she asked me what year he graduated. I said, oh, gosh, I can't remember. And she remembered, because it was the only time that they had indoor graduation, because the weather was bad. And that was the year he graduated. And she also, the day before she came to Washington DC, was reading at the elementary school that my daughter-in-law teaches at. So just a lot of, just cool. It was nice to get to know her. And I've always been amazed at the city of Dubuque. It's on the Mississippi, it's a very old city. My son has now been there for 20 years, as long as he lived, well, longer than he lived here in Washington. And in 20 years, that city has, their downtown has been remarkably updated and redone. They have a park along the Mississippi, they've redone so many buildings and infrastructure there. And it's because they get a lot of federal money. And how I think they do it is after NLC is when their council came into town, their whole council and their city manager. And they had two days of meetings with their congressional staff, and they had a meeting at the White House. I tried to become a council member in Dubuque for a day, but they didn't take me. So anyway, that was, that was a lot of fun. And I agree with Councilmember Walsh, I've always felt that every child should get to go to Washington DC. I didn't get to go there until I was an adult, and it's just an amazing city. I wouldn't want to live there. It's too busy, it's too noisy. But just to be there and knowing the history of the area is just simply amazing. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Council President?
Yes, I'd like to say thank you, too, to Councilmember Walsh for being emotional about the Vietnam Memorial. So many of our people, especially in this area because of JBLA, are veterans, and they're older veterans. And we tend to forget what they went through. And so my, for example, my twin brother, I had a twin brother who was a Marine in Da Nang in a firefight. And I came back to the States, he was injured. He eventually, over a period of years, did die from his injuries. My first husband, young husband, was a pilot, Air Force pilot, out of Thompsonet in Saigon, and flew, very, very scary time for the families of the people serving. And then along comes Iraq and Afghanistan and so on. But our own Councilmember Tran is a beneficiary of the Vietnam. And here in this country, I would say because of that. And so, congratulations, you won the lottery. But thank you to King County Councilmember Von Reitbauer, who was an Army veteran. And it's very important and is donating $5,000 to honor our veterans. It's so important to remember those folks, because we go on and new things come along and we forget what they went through, Iraq, Afghanistan, the horrible things they dealt with, and they don't talk about them, they keep them inside. If you ever saw a current gen fire with Denzel Washington, you can see how they keep those things inside, how traumatic it is for them. But anyway, say thank you to a veteran. And I'd also like to say thank you to Congressman Adam Smith, who helped us very much when we were in DC, and we're hoping that he will continue to help us to get the funding that we're looking for. Thank you.
All right, with that, our business is concluded. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.